We'll call to order the Saline School Board Study Session for Tuesday, February 25th, 2014. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Representative Adam Zemke on the agenda this evening. He's called us. He's coming back from Lansing. I guess they were in session today. He'll be here shortly. So we're going to proceed with the meeting and when Adam gets here, we'll proceed with his presentation that he has for us this evening. This is the portion of the meeting for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes. A request will be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Are there members of the audience that would wish to address the board this evening? No takers? Big crowd? Superintendent Graydon.
I just have a statement I'd like to read tonight related to the incident on February 15th. As a school district and a community, we are reeling from in the wake of events that took place on February 15th that involved three Saline teams. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the community, the students, parents, and families that have come together and offered their support. I would like to specifically thank the high school administration and alternative high school administration staff and their efforts to support our students. I would like to assure the families that we are committed to continuing to support and monitor our students as we work through the ramifications of this tragic event. Counselors and staff will continue to be available for students to talk. Principal Halver, I know, will be addressing the student body tomorrow morning after the pledge to acknowledge the incident and assure them we will be there to provide support for anyone who needs it. Again, as a community, as a school district, now is the time for us to work together, to listen, and to support one another. So I appreciate all the support we've gotten as a community and as a school district.
Any board members have any comments? Trustee Delhaye?
I would primarily like to address all the kids that are here tonight. We are all here on this board because of you guys. And we know that this is very hard for all of you. And we want you to know that we're here to support you. And we want you to remember to be there for each other and to keep an eye out for each other and support each other. If you're struggling, please reach out to the staff, your teachers, your administrators, anyone. Us, we're here for you. And we want you to know that. If you see your friends struggling, please encourage them to do the same. We're a team and we want to stay that way. Thank you.
Any other board members have comments?
Can I talk on a different subject?
Sure.
I wouldn't saw any. That was very good. You really enjoyed it.
Jake?
I'd like to remind everybody this Saturday at the Fifth Corner, the Chili Wars, 11:30 to 1:30. I heard there's a lot of teams and I like that there's effort out there because it's a great cause. And I'm sure that you others that are making chili will have some nice little chilies. Everybody will enjoy them. But the fire department's not that worried about winning. It's about everybody having that chili experience. So come on down and give to your favorite cause. I'm sure trans actually have chili also. Will there be some kind of bacon in it?
(inaudible)
Okay. But it's a good cause. Come on down.
Curry, are you defending chili champion?
No, that's why I put that in early so in case I lose.
And just a couple things. I would like to recognize Raphael, our student rep, who has been named the Student of the Year and will be recognized at the Saline Salutes. I believe that's at the end of March. So well deserved and congratulations. Also, I attended the M E S B Labor Conference last Thursday and Friday. Assistant Superintendent Ellis also joined me at that. I've got a number of presentations. I tried to email them, but they were too big for the system. So I'll work with Patty to get those distributed out to everybody. Along with that, I'll just have a write-up on some comments on what I observed during those two days. Also, there's a legislative meeting coming up on Thursday, March 13th, in Lansing. I've asked trustee Fries to represent the district at that and represent the board at that legislative day. And if there's other board members who wish to attend, let me know that. I will be in Indianapolis then and not be available. But I'm sure trustee Fries will do a great job representing us there at that. Raphael, you have any comments to make?
Yes, I want to make several comments. First, this is going back a week before. This is regarding to, two weeks ago, or I believe two weeks ago, myself and several other students, about nine students, had an opportunity to do the Ethics Bowl. And with the help of Mr. Lodge and Miss Benavon and other students, we ended up going to semifinals for the Michigan Ethics Bowl. So it was a great opportunity. It was a lot of fun. And regarding to the incident that happened on the 15th, from a student's perspective, it's very saddening and very surprising to have, to hear the news. And I think I speak for all students that we center our tears and condolences to the victim's family.
And with that, the chair will entertain to approve the agenda as printed. Trustee Delhaye with a second. From trustee Carter, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We're under our study session topics without objection. We'll move to the special education headly override.
Yeah, just in your packet, you receive information related to the option of running what was called a headly override, similar and not dissimilar to what we just did this past fall. And essentially, part of the Act 18, which is levied locally, allows us to recruit essentially a reimbursement rate from the local ISD to support our special education costs. In the memo that was in the packet noted that right now, the Los Alamos County Special Education Millage can be levied at 4.4 mils. Based on the rollback, it's currently at 3.8. And one of the conversations at the superintendent level across the county was would the county entertain the idea of doing essentially a headly override to restore the .6 mils that have been rolled back over time, to again restore it to the original 4.4 amount that was voter approved. If you recall, recently, the, I believe it was the May of 2011, the county went out to renew the millage, a portion of the millage that had been levied. In doing so, it was restored, it was approved, however, it was approved at the rate that it had originally been rolled back to. And so the proposal now, or the discussion at least, is to look at kind of making it full again, going back to 4.4 in full. In doing so, it was essentially that .6 mils across the county would generate about $8.5 million in revenue. Again, that's not for Saline. That would be from across the county. And then based on our usage rate and the usage rates across the county, the percentage reimbursement would potentially be adjusted. And just to note, for percentage reimbursement, in previous years, it's been over 80 percent. But as early as 2010, 2011, it was at 77 percent reimbursement rate on our dollars spent for special education. It's gone down to 73, 67, 68, and 66 over the next several years. And it is projected to be at 52 percent by 2016. So this again is an opportunity potentially to look at restoring it to 4.4 and have a revenue impact. Not without a political cost, depending on the scenario as it plays out. So I wanted to just have a quick conversation and let the board know that those discussions are out there. I know there's some Epic MRA polling that the county is doing to determine and get some feeling across the county what voter interest is in something like this. And certainly before any next steps are made, we'll come back to the board.
Scott, can you talk through how the actual money turns up to the district? Because you have federal money and state money. It's federal, it's local.
Yeah. Well, and again, by the time that we actually get our final reimbursement, there is kind of the mixing funds. I don't know if Janice, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. Federal funds flow through the ISD and we have to spend the funds and then we're reimbursed for that.
How's that rate established? The ISD determines the payout?
No. It is based on our student count. And then the federal government determines a dollar a mil per special education student.
Is it passed through?
Yes. Yes. Passed through the ISD. The state reimbursement is 28.613 percent of our approved special education costs. And then what is left receives the ISD Act 18 reimbursement. And that this year is 67 percent.
And is also passed out on headcount? Or how's that determined?
No, it's on our actual costs.
Okay. So the district has a higher operating expense than others that get greater percentage of funding?
No, but they would get the 28.6138 percent of the state and then a 67 percent of their actual cost. So everyone's percentage is the same.
But to your point, though, if we have $100,000 in costs, we are reimbursed 67 percent of that. If those same services were to cost $110,000 in another district, they would get reimbursed at 67 percent for $110,000. So I think that was what you're saying. If your costs are wrong, the percentage is the same. The actual dollar figure of reimbursement would rise if your costs are higher.
So your percent reimbursement goes up proportion to your spending?
Your real dollar return does, yes.
So the forecast of rollback from the 67 percent to the 52 percent, what does that mean in dollars?
It would be at least a million dollars.
Okay.
So by approving this, we're actually retaining the money?
Yes and no. I mean, ultimately, the projections right now are based on the current. So we would likely be able to maintain and perhaps go back to towards that 78 percent reimbursement. So I think that the likelihood would be that it potentially could grow slightly. The other aspect is that, again, it's a locally assessed millage. So it rises and falls based on actual property values. And so obviously, part of the decline, in addition to the heavy rollback that have occurred over time, is that the declining property values over the last several years, it took a secondary hit. Conversely, as property values have started to recover, I believe these projections are at flat or slightly above, or slight increases. If the market were to rebound and property values were to rise at a higher rate, that percentage could also go up.
So we can say locally, that means countywide?
Countywide.
Countywide. And the discussion is to November 14 to have this on the ballot?
That's going to be the discussion.
So this percentage is set by the superintendent's practice at this one, based on the pool?
Right. It's based on the pool and essentially looking at, you know, kind of the forecasting. And the idea behind it has always been not to create a cliff. So if you project it out based on what I consider to be, you know, probably somewhat conservative but realistic numbers, if it starts to go down significantly, the intention of the superintendent has always been to start that process early and create a smoothing effect so that you do not have, you know, we're not going at 75 percent and jump into 38 percent. And so various scenarios are presented and we decide on the annual basis how to smooth out the impact. It's been declining since probably the last seven or eight years now, or six years.
And it was supposed to be lower this year. And then property tax values went up a little bit.
So you, in essence, keep a fun balance to make the payments sort of even up?
Yeah. And it also plays into when renewals, you know, obviously, there's a window of time. And the millage needs to be renewed. And so ultimately, you know, there's a potential cliff that comes up and you want to make sure that you have some monies available at that renewal period because you don't know if it's going to be renewed.
Okay. Thank you.
Refresh my memory. If I recall, there was an election back, I would say probably three, four years ago, and I believe it was for a special ed. And they actually lowered the millage rate?
So what they did, and that was in May of 2011, in the packet, I think it put a little bit of pressure. Essentially, what they did is they had already, they had renewed at the rollback rate. So what had previously been a 1.0 mil allocation had been rolled back to .985. And based on the discussion at that point, it was sought to be renewed at .985. So as opposed to going back to the original 1.0.
And I think that if we were to break down special ed in our budget, it represents about 20 percent of our budget?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's probably the 20 percent that we understand the least, mainly because of the funding involved in it. And we don't have a lot of control over it due to the reimbursement mechanisms that are already in place. But it is significant, so.
I think I understood that over time, as it goes, as it has gone from the 4.4 to the 3.8, there is no method for it to ratchet back up. Basically, we have to vote to bring it back up to be able to make that change.
So for example, the way we did, we asked for our headly to be renewed and then we, members of two vote, saying we asked for voters to approve up to, I believe it was in 26 mils or something along those lines.
24.
So the intention, you know, like say there was a two vote, the current ISD millage or the countywide millage does not have that component. So there's no way to continue. If headly rolls back the special education millage that's assessed, there's no pot of voter-approved mills to draw from like there is for ours. We're never going to be assessed more than 18 non-homestead. But if headly rolls back our 18, we can draw from that voter-approved pot to make that hole. And as you say, that second bucket is not available at the county line for them to be made whole. So as it rolls back, it rolls back at that new rate, you know, moving forward.
So then what's driving this? If they're going to ask for eight and a half million dollars more money, is it because they've lost that funding and are trying to recapture it?
Yeah. I think the intention behind it is that the voters had approved 4.4 mils and, you know, to recapture the full 4.4.
So what was the cause of them no longer being at 4.4?
The property taxes were exceeding the rate of inflation. And so headly has a factor that comes into play and reduces it. And so I think it's a combination of things. When it was being rolled back, property values were raising at such a point where it was a non-factor. Once it's rolled back and property values are either declining or flat, the loss in revenue becomes more apparent. There's no smoothing effect of an increase in property value.
Has the county or has the ISD been able to show that they're spending the money wisely?
You know, I think from that standpoint, they do collect the money. It comes to us. So I think, you know, each district has an obligation to account for how we're spending our money. The rules associated with the funding of special education are very specific in terms of allowable and non-allowable uses. So I think, you know, the general, my perception of the perception is that it's been wisely spent. Are there efficiencies to be gained? Yes, I think there are. I think we've talked, and I know Special Education Director Muston is working right now with the committee at the ISD to look at different ways to allocate the funds directly to the locals. And maybe this kind of picks up on trustee Zimmer's, to give the money to the locals and then have a more fee-for-service model versus services provided and monies held and then the remaining sent to the districts. And so I think there's a couple of different models. There are models that are used in other counties that I think intrigue us in terms of efficiency and transparency in terms of how those special education dollars are spent. But again, where they're spent is very prescribed based on state law and federal statute.
Because there's still, because of the economy, there is still a very loud roar of no new taxes. And so why should our public give another eight and a half million dollars to, you know, and believe me, I am not against any sort of special education. I've got a special ed child. But if you can't prove that you're spending it wisely, that kind of a thing, which I understand it flows down to the individual districts. So hopefully we can answer that question.
I can say for Saline that Mr. Muston and I worked together very closely throughout the year and made sure that we're doing things as efficiently as we can.
And that's one of the reasons why Kevin's pushing the fee-for-service concept for districts like Saline that are committed to special needs support to make sure that we can maximize the dollars to suit and needs them. So, you know, they're leading after force in that area.
So within that pool, we couldn't just say tap extra funds or an additional counselor or anything? It has to be a certain guideline?
Any other questions or comments?
So we're talking about this to understand it. What are our next steps?
We're anticipating some feedback related to the Epic MRA polling that took place at our next superintendent meeting, which is coming up here in early March. And then from that information, we'll determine whether or not we, as superintendents, want to vote to talk to our boards further about that. Ultimately, the W I S E board will be, will put that on the ballot. What they would typically ask, like they have in the past, is a resolution from each of the locals, you know, either in support or not in support of it. And so ultimately, each local would have a vote. It doesn't require that every local support passed the resolution. But, you know, ultimately, I think the intention would be is if not all districts are on board, that this is an appropriate pathway, then it would be unlikely that it would be moved forward.
Do they give, like, they usually give a cost, like a house with a value of $100,000, their extra tax would be, do we know?
Yeah, they normally do. I have not looked into that specifically.
Work on a what? Point four or four mil?
Yeah, .6.
Mil?
Well, yeah, .6 mil. So $60 per $100,000 of assessed value. So it'll be $120 a year on a $200,000.
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to welcome State Representative Adam Zemke this evening. Adam was elected in 2012. A portion of the district he represents is Pittsfield Township. Also York, I believe.
Uh, York Township, correct as well.
In York Township. So a fair portion of the district comes under Adam's geography. I have met since he's been elected with Adam on several occasions informally. Also attended his coffee hours that he has. He has immersed himself in public education issues. I found him to be very engaging, open. And certainly, we welcome you here tonight. I wanted to bring you in front of the full board because there's a lot of issues going on in Lansing that impact us. And you're our advocate in Lansing. And we appreciate the work you're doing on our behalf. But with things like teacher evaluations, the upcoming budget, possible revisions to the sinking fund, you can throw in, you know, we've had a number of days off. And I know the legislation is, our legislature is viewing how we should make up those days and things like that. So we got a lot of ground to cover tonight. We have plenty of time.
All right.
And we look forward to a robust discussion. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Dave. And thank you all for having me here this evening. I apologize. It took me a little bit longer to get back to Lansing than usual. But I do have a presentation. There's handouts for everyone here. And I think we have a few extras beyond that. I made 20 copies, I think, two pages. And I can put it on the screen for everyone in the audience as well. But there was a number of topics. Superintendent Graydon was gracious enough to provide me with and make sure I touched on. And then I've added in some additional topics that I've not elaborated on detail, but we can talk about in general. And I can provide some additional information if you're so interested going forward. So do we want to?
Got to be good for the benefit of the audience.
I'm sure we can probably ask one of our faculty-savvy students who advanced. Oh, you've got a long enough course?
I think you guys are well prepared. Hopefully this will work here. All right. Okay. So the first four bullet points are the issues that we're going to highlight in detail in the presentation. And I apologize, I'm an engineer by background. We are inherently wordy. And I realized as I was putting this presentation together that it was not very visually attractive. So help fall asleep on me. But it is very detailed. And I can elaborate on all these points. So issues tonight, in particular, evaluation legislation, House Bill 523, 524, the budget, specifically the executive recommendation and any progress, sinking fund expansion legislation, and the issue of snow days, as you mentioned. There are also several other issues that are of light in Lansing right now that I'd like to make sure are on your radar. Issue for degree reading retention. It's a two-ball package. Mayor Price and Tommy Stallworth are the representatives who are sponsoring legislation. Letter grading for schools, which is revision of basically NDE's policy, policy, and some changes to that. Lisa Lyons is a sponsor. It's a one-ball package. Teacher certification examinations is not being handled directly by the legislature again, although I believe that we can probably wind up seeing something in the next couple of years. And these are essentially the examinations that are required by teachers who are being served up in the state. So prior to becoming in your capacity here. Expansion of statewide school district, also known as the DEA, the Education Department Authority. House Bill 46.3 is the bill number. Lisa Lyons is a sponsor of that. And that's had some, quite a bit of press and shifting around a thing over the last year since it's first introduced. Pay-for-pound pilot program for university tuition, which was just recently introduced and is, I've got it referred to committee and actually not with the sponsor of that. That's Senator Koenigsegg. And school district consolidation, the depth of production plan changes. And this is something that is going on right now and is being handled primarily through the budget. There's been some changes through not the schooling budget, but through the Department of Education budget, which is part of the general spending. And so we'll talk a little bit about some of the plans that hopefully will never, never come out of the reality for Saline, but so you're aware of them. So administrator teacher evaluations. So there's two bills here. Professor Robert O'Brien and myself are the primary sponsors of legislation. These are essentially requirements. In 2011, as I think probably most of you are aware, the state did some pretty drastic changes to the teacher's administrative policies. And things changed extensively. One of the tasks that came under that legislation was the committee that became called MCEP. And this was a committee that was chaired by Dean Deckerball from the University of Michigan and had a half a dozen members from around the state that had experience in education. And their task was to design the structure of evaluations for teachers and administrators going forward. That's really what these bills are. We don't deal with any of the tenure changes. In fact, the people at the table have been very, I don't know if I will, who are reluctant, but I will, to even touch the tenure act because of the various nature of, depending on which side of the fence you're on, really, kind of all sides of political spectrum are afraid of opening these things back up because a vote can happen as a result of not doing that. And so the bills are about 80 percent. And so the bills are about eighty percent aligned with our work. That's an estimate by me, but I think that's pretty accurate, what the recommendations are from the MCEP. And really, because we got to about eighty percent because of this being a compromise. You know, about six months ago, now seven months ago, a committee was formed between Representative O'Brien and myself, and representatives of stakeholders from across the state, all folks that would represent your interests and the interest of teachers and other folks who would be affected by these laws, and bring them all to the table. As I've learned in my short time in Lansing, there is an association for everything. Usually that's a bad thing. In this particular case, it was very good. So we have representative from both teachers unions, from the secondary school principals, from the school boards, from the school administrators, from various education associations, and then myself, Representative O'Brien, and Representative Bill Rogers. Rogers is chairman of two subcommittees that I sit on, appropriations, a lot of which being the subcommittee on the school aid, which is where a lot of the dollars are coming from. And these bills have a price tag, and they're not appropriations bills, but the training for legislation is not cheap either. And so we wanted to make sure that, because they're not appropriations bills, that appropriations committee goes very well in form, and the strongest voice for that includes a chairman.
And the late governor's budget has thirty-two million dollars.
It has thirty-two million specifically for evaluations, and then it totals a total of forty-one point eight million for evaluation from minus assessment dollars there. But there's a phase in period for the evaluation, so there's dollars in 2015 for this budget and then going forward, they'll be incorporated as that phase in. So I would say these bills are very well funded, very funded fidelity, which is what our goal was. I have to say the governor's been very supportive of our efforts, and I think because of really the bipartisan cooperation we've seen here, we have pretty broad rights in support of these bills. To meet them, essentially, there's two main components, student growth and practice. And I'll break down all of those areas on the next couple of slides. You have grading scores, highly effective, effective, nominally effective, and ineffective. And basically, what this means in terms of application within the tenure policies is that if anyone is ineffective, administrator or teacher, the legislation requires that they are dismissed after three consecutive years. And if anyone is highly effective for consecutive years, we also allow for observations, and in case of administrators, the evaluation portion is, can be moved at the two of my annual basis over two years. So from a logical standpoint, that makes sense to me. If you're doing well, we should put our resources into helping the folks who are not doing well. So timing. So the bills are tied hard together, which means that they both must pass or are to log that. And they are in committee, they have another debate during tomorrow morning, and we have likely not, they'll likely not be voted on tomorrow, you know, I almost certainly don't want to vote on tomorrow. We're working on a substitution based on some of the comments we're hearing in the committee, and trying to incorporate in, you know, some suggestions to improve the legislation based on the testimony we've heard so far. So we are expecting there to be a voting period in approximately a week, and then it will likely very quickly go to the House floor for vote. Representative O'Brien and I have been working with House leadership, on both sides of the aisle, to understand where members are at, and I've not heard really any opposition that we've been able to, or come through discussions on them through a committee process. So I think it's been a very, very good process so far.
Do you expect a vote?
I would expect that the vote on the House floor will take place probably sometime in March. Our goal is to really get it through the House before the, before the end of March. There's a two recess period, which is a new word, maybe because I don't have recess in a number of years. But there's a recess period, the first two weeks of April, so our goal is to get it through before then, and then the challenge will be to get it through December as well. So.
Do you expect a vote?
We do not yet. There is a kind of a ticking clock on this legislation. The reason there is, is because the original changes require that, starting at the end of this academic year, going to the next academic year, well, actually technically the next academic year, the annual evaluation include growth measures. This is something that has not been taken into account under the current structure because it really isn't in the structure, which is really the main reason for doing this. And so, so our goal is to really get it through as quickly as possible so that part of this, what happens is it pushes that growth a year out, essentially so you can have a full year growth, starting the next academic year. So that's the main timeframe, and I feel pretty happy at any point.
Have you talked to the Senate, does the Senate have any legislation or?
No, these are certainly House bills. And what we've had is a number of conversations yet with Bill Patlon, who's the chair of the Senate Education Committee. Not sure where all these members are at on it yet. But our goal has been primarily to move it to the House with as few drastic changes as possible. Bill has been aware of the legislation, what's the time, and involved in the original details too. So we're hopeful that our goals cannot be deviated from our conversation with them too much, so that we can gain support. The, this is really the breakdown on the student growth. So essentially, you have a three-year ramp up period until full implementation, starting the next year, and full implementation would then occur in the 2017 to 2018 calendar year, academic year rather. During ramp up period, growth component is twenty-five percent of the total evaluation score, that's for everybody, administrators and teachers. At full implementation, in legislation, growth component is fifty percent of the total score. And if you have any questions throughout this, we get a little wordy with the terminology on each of these. So growth calculation is to be determined by the Department of Education. So there have been a number of conversations, a lot of research on how you calculate student growth. There's pre-test and post-test methods, there's also implementation of statistical value, their own value-added measurements, which are statistical weighting, things like poverty, race, gender, and a lot of conversations on all these things. We want our legislation to not determine a specific one because our thought was going to be the experts on this, and we want this to be permanently determined between the department and the local district, that's the proper way to go. So we've not called out a growth method, methodology, yes.
So how strong is that feeling in the local districts? And you think the student evaluation?
I think it's pretty strong, quite frankly. On the growth, we're talking certainly about the growth component. There are other areas of evaluation that the local districts are explicitly called out, that's not being in the interest of the choice, and we'll get to those.
And fifty percent of this core in growth, what's going to be the lens of, it's all going to be in districts that is going to be destroyed or, whatever, in the current access core, there's several.
So that's one of the things that has come up a couple of times in our testimonials, and also through conversations with representatives from those districts. And I think you're going to, we haven't determined a specific method on handling essentially districts that are in deficit, which is probably the easiest way of corresponding with districts that are dealing with very adverse learning conditions. And so I think that, I think that we have identified a few ways of dealing with this, but we don't have anything to determine as to if there will be a separate method, or how to take into account growth in those areas, if it's going to be taken into account any differently. That's also something that technically, a way of statistical measurement can be applied to take into account poverty. Now, I have to be honest, I'm not a statistician, but the statisticians I have talked with do have some concerns about the validity of value-added measurement rating. There's only about three models out there that are what they're recognized, and there still are some concerns, it seems, from the votes I've borne.
And I, but you know, one of the things, Mr. Ross, and I've had this conversation, when you start to really get down to it, what does a year's worth of student growth look like in various, the variables that come into play, you know, if you teach her, okay, fifty percent of your performance is based on student growth, you have thirty kids in class, is that the majority of, is everyone, what comes into play there? And the factors that impact student growth come from both inside and outside of the classroom. So that has been one of the struggles for us. What is that, years' worth of growth, and what does it look like in Celine versus what it looks like in, we work at national norms, you work at local norms, regional, tier districts, but we really don't have a wide variety of data sets, or to try and get a sense of what group you'd want all, and years' worth of growth in Celine, so.
The other concern is teaching the test.
Right.
Fifty-four, isn't that kind of a big question, that you're going to teach the test?
So actually, I think the second part of this slide addresses your question pretty well, because that's definitely not a concern as well. So when we say growth, we don't mean a state assessment by default. It's broken down actually as a, as a variety of assessments, and I use the word assessment from a very used term, what I mean really is growth measurement. So I have four subjects, for the, at least the near future, that only means emotional intelligence mathematics, as we're changing the state assessment. Eventually, it will probably be social studies and sciences. But forty percent of the growth component will come from the state assessment. So that's forty percent of fifty percent at full implementation. So there's definitely had a lot of concern about standardized testing coming into play here, and we feel that this mitigates standardized testing's effect on total evaluation score.
So figuring, what is that, is that state assessment, or are you thinking you read that school to be smarter balance assessment?
So we've been completely silent in legislation on what the assessment is. We do put certain criteria, as you're probably aware, smarter balance and any state assessment, whatever comes next, is highly politicized in Lansing right now. And what we do not want to happen is this legislation, because of the ticking clock on it, it bogged down in that flip size problem. We're dealing with that separately as well, and I'm happy to elaborate on it, I actually did not put that on my list of things, but I'm happy to elaborate on it. But this legislation has criteria in, it calls out things, essentially all the tests that then could be requested proposals on, the things like immediate feedback from the vendor. We define in our legislation of within two weeks, item level examples. So essentially, when you're looking at assessments, you have, you have a standard measurement, so of the common core standard, you have a standard that's being described, and you have an item level, which is the question, so we call up examples of item levels. So the idea is for teachers to be able to receive, and parents, and students, and administrators to be able to receive examples of the question that schools are struggling with, so that they can say, oh, Johnny is not doing as well on this type of statistical problem, here's how, here's how we can, you know, this is the area that we need to focus on, Johnny. So we require that level of detail. This is something that, as I understand it, we do nothing like this, you know, so this would obviously validate the assessment, that's fine anyways because the state is moving away from it. But it will also give the feedback that we feel is necessary to improve the corrupt over time from all stakeholders, the student, the teacher, the administrator, and parents. And so, and there's a variety of other criteria that have to be applied in the assessment aspect. But the idea is to have a very detailed robust criteria without falling out of specific state assessment.
And is there timing around that, are they are going to, they're co-be, whether it's ACT model, K-32, or it is hard to announce, and I know districts that are, so we're trying to get ready for computer-based assessments, but I'm sure what the cycle is going to be like in a year, whether it's in the fall or this spring, which will be close, so we're struggling to get ready for that, regardless of what it's going to be.
So on this particular question, I believe, and I can only give you what I believe is correct in this, I believe this will be sorted out in the budget. That's really the only, essentially, the RFPs or smarter balance all went out like three years ago. The MDE is going to do a secondary RFP to confirm a few things, and technically, that will be the end date for any additional assessments for the smarter balance to participate. But the funding, certain, being appropriated for this new assessment is going to be in terms of effects on the local districts. And so I think this will be sorted out, and it will face the direction like humanism.
So in that regard, one of the things that we've heard, and this is not necessarily a question, that ACT has come in, and they're kind of driving some of this, and it's career and about to rain this model, and obviously, we kind of, we do the ACT suite at the secondary level, and what, at that elementary level, that may or may not be, what are you hearing in terms of, who's the leading force in that, RP?
I think really, what it comes down to is between ACT and SPECT at this point. There, the proposal will go out to HARC and a few others that have previously submitted proposals for, and were competitive in terms of their qualifications. There's definitely some differences between ACT and a few of these other ones. And the main difference, I see it, and I personally believe the legislature has no business going here on, these are details that the department shouldn't handle, that's my personal belief, but the legislature does appropriate funding, and therefore, and do whatever the legislature wants, et cetera. Have you seen that? We did that previously, I apologize, I apologize for that. But, but the main difference is that the ACT is not aligned with the common core, which is going to doubt, so it's not aligned with the basic content standards. And I see that as a pretty large difference. And so, you know, we're at the RP, the secondary RP, will be out, I think, within the next week or so. There's a pretty tight timeframe on it, and then obviously, the budget is being crafted in concert, and I think that we're going to see a separate direction being finalized by the time the first budget comes out of the House.
Is ACT looking at trying to align the common core?
I believe they are, but I think this is something that has, I think this is something that they decided on a few years ago, the direction they were going to go, and I personally just think that this is decision-making.
Or is the ACT allowed to be, to have the secondary RP modified to fit ACT and not common core?
I would argue that ACT has been lobbying, at the end of the day, the RP, the local legislature can't vote here, the RP is designed to put out five different departments. And I think what has happened is that you've seen the ACT lobby representatives and senators, and two Ps representatives and senators, the MDE has agreed to go out for the RP at this point, and I think that's what you're, what you're seeing. That's, you know, really inside baseball, but that's what I, what I see.
I guess my concern is, with the amount of time commitment made across the United States, your common core, our administrators, our teachers, students have learned a different way, learned a different process, started a process, it's a huge thing. And to have a vendor who has a solution they want to sell, come in and impose a test score methodology different than the instructional methodology, and then have us hold different set on the teacher evaluation, that's accountable to that?
Right.
That's not fair. It's not fair to the teacher, it's not fair to the administrator, it's not fair to the parents.
And then...
And we may be preaching to fire here, but the, you know, one of the things that seems counter to this A C T coming in is, you know, Joseph Martinow, who's like the main statistician for M D E, is one of the big chair people for smarter balance. Sort of running this for M D E along with smarter balance, and he's fully around this, helping to develop that at the top level for M D E. And then now A C T kind of swoops in and says, we've got a better product, which seems like that's not aligned with what the Department of Education thinks.
A C T has a product they're selling, that they've spent years developing, that lines up with their A C T testing methodology, that supports their domination over S A T. It's a core business strategy, I get it, that's not what we're in.
Could you circle back, I know we talked a lot about the different measurements and whatnot, but if you go back to that student growth piece, I know you started to talk about the core subjects, but then, you know, reading through this here, you've got the non-core subjects and special ed, the counting for forty percent, and the remaining growth component for fifty. So I understand that you're creating a growth score for a student. How does that get applied to a teacher? I may be an English Language Arts teacher, I don't have any of the non-core instruction, I don't have any of the special ed piece, so. So if I'm an English teacher that has a hundred and fifty kids on my case load, how is, are those students' growth scores going to be attached to me?
Right, so this second, non-core subjects and special ed, this is essentially the interchangeable piece for the core subjects. So we realized that, that the state assessment is only going to cover two subjects initially, which is, by far and large, although very important for the teachers that teach those subjects, and very important for student learning. It's not the vast majority of educators. The vast majority of educators fall into this non-core category, and there is not any method, nor is there any plans for any method for the state to measure those subjects. So, for example, art, or physical education, or health and wellness, these are all subjects that fall into the non-category, non-core category. Special ed is handled very similarly, in the sense that it relies on a local, local-based assessment. And as legislation describes, that local assessment is determined between the educator and the administrator conducting the evaluations, or the administrator responsible for the evaluations. So there will have to be work done between those two individuals to understand how to measure growth.
So you're saying that that growth component is negotiated locally?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, so then we can design a model?
That is correct.
In collaboration with the interested parties?
That is exactly.
To come up with something that's fair?
That is exactly right. And this third bullet point under the measurement of student growth component is another local section. So if you look on the core and the non-core, if you look at those as two silos, essentially, you have forty percent in core, forty percent non-core, so you have sixty percent of the growth component remaining. And that is all determined based on student marketing objectives, also down to the local, local growth measurements, and down to the global. And at most, ten percent building level growth. And we called that out specifically because we realize that a teacher teaching one particular subject is inevitably going to have expertise that spills over into another subject. If you can't do mathematics, if you can't read, it's a good way of looking at it. And so, we recognize that with some type of building level, although minimal, five percent of the total score is what maxed out at, you know, play to rule. So you have, you know, essentially significant local determining factor on.
So in terms of, you know, student learning objectives, you're saying there's no real current movement at the state level to define what those could or could not be? And I use an example, trustee Carter and I talked a little bit about ethic, we may have a learning objective associated with social, emotional, and wellness. It could be something like that, and not necessarily.
It could be, it could be whatever the definition of a student learning objective is under, under current statute and agreement with local districts, there's no plans to change any of that.
Well, that's refreshing to hear, that it's not going to be one size fits all, we have something imposed upon us, and nobody likes it, but we got to do it.
And you're only for non-core, so you have a skit, so you dynamic building that?
You have, so you, of the core subjects, two subjects, you have essentially twenty percent of the total score that will be affected by the state assessment. The other eighty percent will be up twenty percent of the total score, forty percent of the growth component. The other sixty percent of that growth component is determined locally for core subjects as well.
For core as well.
For core as well, yeah, so that's where it really gets into, like I said earlier, this is, it's not simple to explain this stuff. I have a lot of trouble talking to the press about this, because it's very, very cumbersome, it's detailed legislation.
One of the concerns that has been expressed by some is that in that weighting, the parental component is less than ten percent. Things like teacher attendance, some teacher conducts, all that is weighted at less than ten percent, and there's a feeling that that's underweighted. What's, what's your take on that?
So my take on that is, I think, and this is again my, my opinion, that we will likely see a shifting of growth and the other prac, the other portion of this, under full implementation, the other fifty percent is practice, is the other component. I think we will see a shifting, where you will see, instead of fifty-fifty, you will see something like growth being forty percent, and practice being something like sixty percent. And you will have an increase in the effects that student feedback, we call them, them local factors, student feedback, parent feedback, other professional, professional impacts have on, or can have on that, that score. So I think you'll see something like forty percent growth, forty percent of these, these local factors, if you will, and forty percent, or excuse me, not forty percent, forty percent, thirty percent local factors, and thirty percent of the observation, and that's the kind of.
Yeah, and I think those who are expressing that concern, they extrapolated out, and I'm not sure I agree with the view, but they extrapolated out and say that, you know, this is a way to detour around the tenure law.
And I don't believe that's the case.
Okay.
The, and I have to tell you, I don't want to name names, the individual who has a particular concern on this has been at the table from day one with our work group. And we've had many, many conversations, I've had private conversations, and we have not been able to come to the table with any improvements as to how we can address some of the concerns that have been posed, and that individual is an expert. I'm not an expert, so I rely on folks like that to help provide input, and I think we're going to see some changes. There's a lot of folks around the table who are willing to make those changes, including representatives from the teachers' unions, and the school boards, and administrators, who are very willing to work, because I don't think, again, anybody is interested in opening up the teacher's tenure act again. And so, the concerns that have been expressed have not called in on debt years.
Okay, I guess one of the questions I would have is, is why, you know, the two thousand and eleven changes really did prescribe this percentage associated with student growth?
Right.
There was no other prescription associated with it. So now we're saying we're going to put percentages on these other components, as opposed to just saying student growth, and then locally developed, whether it be observation or not. What's the, what's the philosophy of adding restrictions into the percentages?
So the philosophy really comes out of having a very detailed and robust structure for impacts of the, the practice component and of the growth. I mean, the only percentage that's called out in the, in the two thousand and eleven legislation was growth going at fifty percent. I don't know why that was done, I was, I was not here for that legislation or that debate, and what compromises were made in order to arrive at fifty percent. That being said, the council on educator effectiveness was very prescriptive in their description of the practice component, the non-growth period pieces, and also some of the growth as well. They wanted us to go substantially further in terms of the level of prescriptive detail on value-added measures to be included, and we elected to leave that open in the legislation. That being said, in discussions with that group, and in particular, with the chairperson of that group, it became very apparent that really the ticket to improving educator effectiveness, both at administrator level and on a teacher level, was these things that fall into the practice component as well. The, the tool for observation and feedback, the training associated thereof, which is where a lot of the appropriation goes. And then these other things like student and parental feedback, and, and participation in, in things in, in the school building. So that's really why the prescriptive nature was put into place. I really tried to describe these bills as the structure behind the evaluation, whereas the, the tenure act was the, the structure behind the termination, essentially. I think that's a good way to separate the two.
To back up on one thing, you'd said that eighty percent of these bills are in line with the M C E's recommendation. So one of the things I noticed that's not in line with that is M C E saying it should be three effectiveness ratings and not four.
Right.
Can you speak to sort of now why the four are going against that recommendation from M C E?
So really, the M C E was allowed to, allowed not to always have to fit into a particular box. The four items, or four descriptions are called out in the teacher tenure, in section twelve forty-nine, so we would have to open that back up in order to change that. And so we elected, due to, due to that, we elected to, to not, not open the legislation back up.
Yeah, because there's definitely been a lot of debate in our district about the separation between highly effective and effective, and M C E is basically saying, maybe we shouldn't be involved in that.
In particular, in talking with Dr. Ball, her concerns, more than anything, about the highly effective versus effective, which I've heard several times, are dealing with actually the group of minimally effective or ineffective, and identifying the folks who fall into that category. Because at the end of the day, the idea behind this legislation, part of the reason that I sponsored it, was because I believe that the most impactful thing you can have on a student's education is an inspiring teacher. And the best way to ensure that teachers have a great opportunity to inspire students is to have excellent administrators, making sure that the school is run to the best of, you know, really everybody's abilities. So identifying the folks who are not as effective in that area is very important, and I think that's really what we're deemed, while we expressed her concerns on that to me. And I think we're going to, we're going to talk about ways that we can, we can talk, we can try to make sure those folks are identified. I think that the category terms, though, probably are not going to be able to be changed. We discussed that, and I just don't think it's going to be feasible. The next area, this is the practice component, and I highlighted teacher, because this is where the legislation differentiates slightly. We really approach this legislation as what's good for you, since it's going to be in there. So the administrator and teacher bills, all by being separate, virtually mirror one another, they mirror one another in practical application for certain. So the difference is, really in terminology, more than anything, on the teacher bill, five two two three, the balance of the total score outside of growth, will be seventy-five percent practice, and a full implementation will be fifty percent practice under the current structure. Of that practice component, it's broken up into multiple, multiple categories. You have an observation tool, this is where you come into play with the Danielson model, or Zanilla model.
We use the game, we use one of the four.
Right, and we, we allow for modification and for development of locally-based tool in the legislation. There has to be criteria that are met, and they're basically all in line, that if you want a global tool, that'd be pretty similar in a robust nature to one of these state testing tools. So we offer the four tools that are, that are suggested by the M C E, and we do, we do a lot of that deviation. The, of the observations, classroom visits, each subject tool must be at least two percent, two annually, one of which must be unsettled. And the administrator who's responsible for the observation can delegate the observations, but their, their evaluation also includes a quality check. So basically, you can't, the idea is to outlaw an administrator to skirt the responsibility of doing a quality observation, and providing that, that feedback to the teacher in a time and manner that's also called out, we put in two weeks. And working with that teacher to improve, so that the quality component is a key component to the administrator evaluation, so I watch it at home. And, but there can be this delegation, as we realize that administrators wear a lot of hats, and maybe there's somebody else that is better suited, or has more time, or however the local district would like to approach it, they can do so.
Well, that is a little bit out of the allowing of modifications, and that was one of the concerns, is that the process allows for modification, but it's so stringent that it's virtually impossible to do, so.
Right, I don't believe that is actually accurate, because it comes to the allowable areas, they're doing, I don't have a copy of the bill or not, but what we can do.
While you're looking up that, this tool is a series of questions, and we go in for the observation to record.
It's a rubric, it's a rubric.
Based on practice and planning, preparation, professional responsibilities, four different tiers, basically.
How many observations?
Do the average administrator do? Well, we do at least two. Most administrators are doing more than that, when they can, obviously, this is a, you know.
Did you take observations or were you?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, at least two, trying to get to more, is the bottom line, obviously feel more is better, but trying to get into every classroom.
I understand.
So here, if you have a copy of legislation, if not, we can make a copy of this. Page twenty-four, subsection six, is where the, oh, five, Hospital five two two three, is where the, the criteria for the, the tool is defined, and it is detailed. But I can tell you that it's our belief that this detail does not deviate from really any of the, the four state tools. And so, if there's something that you've adapted your state tool to do, that doesn't fall within this criteria, please let me know, and we'll be happy to address that.
So if we, if we use a state tool with modifications, it now de facto becomes a locally developed option?
I guess technically, but I think for the purposes of, of training, the, we specify vendor-based training in the existing legislation. There's some discussion about moving to kind of train the trainer methods, where an I S D could become a certified trainer, and we could save some costs with that method. The state has agreed to pay for the training for this, and so a modified example of a state tool, I think would probably still fall into the sort of vendor-based training. I think we have to work on that.
No, no, we are.
Just to give us some thought.
I think you would probably go with, you would want to go with a, a vendor-based or certified vendor-based, that's really where you're going to get the, the meat of the training. You would not want to train locally, I don't think. And we require that, like I said, in the existing legislation, we require a vendor to perform the training. But I think there's some agreement that we will likely go to a certified individual by the vendor, so we can consolidate.
Would, would locally, would local districts have the option to become certified?
Yeah, I don't think we have any restrictions on certification. I know some I S Ds have expressed the fact that they want to utilize this, that they want to become trainers, essentially. They want to learn the system, they want to be real good at it, and they want to go out and use, utilize this as a, as a, you know, profit-making enterprise for their own, their own districts, so.
So then that would mean the county would have to go to one evaluation system, right?
Well, yeah, and I believe, yeah, I believe we're all Danielson right now. Everybody's more around a local, I think.
Yeah, that, that's all up to you guys. We currently, the idea, the spirit behind that vendor requirement is really to ensure that, that some folks don't skirt the training. And over and over again, we talked to between eighty and a hundred teachers, I talked to a number of them in focus groups in person, all around the state, and we did a lot of phone conversations, too. And they, they were all moderated by one individual, so similar questions were asked. And over and over again, the training in the successful districts that piloted these tools was the key component, and in the unsuccessful districts, the ones that are now under, under lawsuit, the training or the lack thereof, and the abuse of the system was the reason for that. So we found that this is really where the state needs to excel.
I think the, as I said, scroll through this, I think the language that was questioned is on page twenty-six, and it starts on line fourteen, where it talks about for an observation tool, that, a commercial observation tool, detailed documentation that shows any change in performance landscape for its indicator. detailed documentation that shows any change in performance landscape for each indicator.
Right.
Justification, et cetera, that was the part that was some concern about.
Okay, um, let's, we'll definitely look at it and, and, um, you know, we'll get back with you on, on changes and things like that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Could create, based on explanation, what's the concern at this point?
Well, we, we, Danielson's got sixty-one, um, different elements that they, that they look at. And so, um, we have modified that down, and we, we believe we've captured all sixty-one of those elements, but we've done it in a different pattern, so there are forty. We still have four domains, but instead of having sixty-one different elements, we now have about forty. And, and reading through this, it talks about justification for change, and evidence that the adaptation provides equal or greater rigor. But the concern is to go from sixty to forty is gonna be perceived as not equal or greater rigor, and, and we don't necessarily feel that way, so.
Okay.
Do we require any sort of?
Basically, aren't you saying just doing the documentation to establish that it is equal or greater rigor is the, is the problem? Or are you just saying that, well, we do forty instead of sixty, and, and people will assume that's less rigor?
Yeah, I'm saying there's not a lot of definition to what equal or greater rigor is, and rigor and all those words that gets talked about in education pretty regularly, that doesn't have a whole lot of definition to it. So, it's just, it's a scary word, but he's a favorite.
Yeah, the argument of doing.
Rigor implies pain.
And a certain number, sixty-one is just too big.
Which I think you could make that argument, basically, what I'm saying is detailed documentation, for an observation tool adapted from a commercial observation tool, detailed documentation that shows any changes in performance language for each indicator, justification for the change and evidence that the adaptations provide equal or greater rigor than at least one of the four observational tools. Uh, so basically, it's just saying document what you did and why you did it. I know it'd be a pain in the butt to have to do that, but.
Well, you see it to validate that as well before you install it. Then you, you would have to do a test for, for your time. Using the testing methodology, you have to go through and do a pilot and test it and evaluate it over a couple of years to demonstrate if there's no bias in the results.
Yeah.
And if you don't have that, then you simply stop the litigation for arbitrarily established standard that can't be defended. There's, there's legitimate concerns to it.
Yeah.
So, I would encourage that, use some phone conversations.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at it and, um, and, you know, get back with you as to what our own local interpretation is, so that you can have that, so, of course.
Thanks, Kurt, that's.
Is there an oversight? Who in the state's gonna be the overseer of all this, the state part of education or Michigan?
So, it'd be the department.
Okay.
And, um, now, the, the way the legislation is written, it, it doesn't, uh, define, uh, an oversight committee, but there's budget dollars, the governor has defined an oversight committee. The, we are required by our No Child Left Behind waiver to have some degree of oversight. And so, it's kind of still being discussed as to what that will be. Our goal was not, and we're gonna work to this, not to create a system where local EAs, um, have to, you know, provide the state with a bunch of paperwork that's gonna sit. You know, we understand that the state is a slow movement entity. I bang my head on the table more often than I don't, um, in some cases. But, um, we also are required to, uh, deal with this No Child Left Behind waiver. So, I think there's gonna be some degree of oversight, um, but it's to be determined as to what that is. I know there's budget dollars for it.
And suspect audits and kinda like it plays out now in other areas, and Title Two, Title One, every so often, districts are getting checked for quality control, basically.
Right.
So, there, would there be any benefit for us to provide you with our modified model? And, and, and take that in front of your colleagues and say, does this meet the rigor test?
I think that would be great, you know, specifically the modi, areas of modification, um, would be, would be key.
All right.
And what we'll do is probably work with the department and the vendor to understand what their thoughts are on it, and then I'll go into.
Kurt, have him sign it and keep a copy in the record, would you?
Under lock and key, yeah. Gold-plated.
One, one of the things where we've really tried to do is, um, we've really tried to rely on vendors, because they're the ones developing the tool in this particular case. And we feel that, um, if we give them a set of criteria, and we say, this is what we're requesting a proposal on, you meet it, and the standard's on them to develop a, a system that meets our criteria, we can hold them accountable. And that's really the way business should be done. And so, um, in this particular case, you know, we are, uh, we're looking at this as the vendor needs to be a, a primary caretaker kind of throughout the process, so, that's what we're paying for. I mean, forty-one million dollars, including some assessment dollars, is not a small amount of money. Thirty-two is not a small amount of money.
Yeah.
So, um, of the, the practice component, the breakdown, eighty percent is this, this tool. That's the observation, and then twenty percent, uh, is currently defined as, uh, this other, these other factors. But like I said, I do think that's gonna move towards, more towards, um, something like thirty percent, uh, or forty percent of the practice component being these, these local factors. If, if you look at, uh, research on growth, um, and student feedback, um, very, very closely, you have teachers and administrators who have high growth scores and have probably positive reviews. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, cases that are brought forward that say, well, you know, what if students are just, um, you know, grading teachers because they like them the best? The research doesn't actually support these types of things. Research supports, uh, teachers who teach well get high feedback on, on an overall basis. And, uh, so, um, the, uh, avenue for students and, uh, and folks around peers to have a voice in the process is, is important. And so, we've heard from a lot of students, uh, who wanna participate, and they, I've talked to them, we've talked, you know, confidentially, and they've said, this wasn't in Celine, um, because I'm sure you guys all have great teachers and administrators, but they've talked about folks who they knew were good enough. And, uh, and I say, you know, do you have any way of like anonymously reporting this to anybody? And they say, well, not really. And so, uh, that has resonated, and I think you're gonna see some movement in these.
Do you, do you have, uh, do you have the data in terms of the percentage of the teachers in the, in the state who are rated minimally effective or ineffective?
Actually, I asked that question specifically, um, and I asked it to legal counsel, who was involved in, in bringing some of these concerns forward. And ineffective, it was very low, something like two or three percent currently. And minimally effective, they didn't have a exact percentage to give me, but they said it was something like twelve percent.
Okay.
And I said, well, the understanding that I have, if we're like the thirty-second state to implement something, even remotely like evaluations, um, is that approximately ten percent of folks who are evaluated over a period of time are found to be basically, they shouldn't be either in the classroom or the school building. And so, that's what we, that's, that's kind of the standard that I expect to shift. That only Michigan's an anomaly in that particular manner. I think at the end of the day, we're talking about ten percent of the administrators and ten percent of, of educators should not be in the classroom. I think this, uh, the balance will, will fall right around there, so. And the idea behind, again, minimally effective is to improve in particular, um, you know, ASAP, so.
I mean, that's what, I, I hope that's what the tool is there for.
That's exactly right.
It's the flag that says, all right, we need to rally around this person and help them either learn some skills or address whatever issues and make them better, a better teacher, or make them better in the classroom.
Yep.
Because if we're building a tool that's just going to be used to hatchet people, then that's not going to be a successful model.
I agree with you a hundred percent, and that's, um, really the difference again between the, the tenure changes on the, on the termination side and, and really these being the structure of improvement.
So, then i- if we wanna look around that a little bit, if I look at the trains on the track, we get tenure law, we're gonna have the evaluation system, and then next comes professional development. Do you think that there'll be a, a will in Lansing to provide money for professional development so that if we do have teachers that, that aren't where we want them to be, that we have the resources to help them get to where we want them to be?
I think targeted professional development is something that, uh, will be able to be discussed. I think blanket general, general fund dollars or, or school aid fund dollars for PD, without any definition, will probably not have any traction, but I think targeted professional development dollars is something that falls very much in line with a lot of the other, uh, items, uh, that have been under, I call them special projects, under the school aid budget, but there are things like this.
Okay.
Whereas there have been dollars set aside specifically to handle certain things. I think PD could even fall under potentially some of the categories that exist now.
Like, there's already Title Two ones that would get, you know, upwards of a hundred thousand dollars a year to work on professional development.
Okay.
That if we had a core group of teachers that needed extra support after these evaluations, in theory, that could go, that's already been in place for every district for years.
But, Dave, to your, to your point, additional dollars, I think is something that, um, that will be able to be supported if it's, if it's targeted in a particular fashion, so. And I'm willing to definitely, uh, work, work for that more so, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that you saw the number of ten percent, um, because that's pretty much what's, you know, the, the public or private, an organization has an effective performance management system. It's the ten percent, uh, are great and ten percent, um, are struggled.
Right.
And so, I'm glad that reality kinda played through, that's good.
Absolutely, and you know, I also, this just made me think about this for a second. I want you guys to know that this is legislation that affects all schools that take public dollars. So, all charter schools and all traditional public schools have to abide by this legislation. And, uh, and so, uh, we've had some opposition, quite frankly, from some folks who don't want to describe, or don't want some of the prescriptive nature that we've, that we've had. But we feel very strongly that this legislation is designed for quality instruction and quality school buildings, and those don't stop anywhere, so. And we don't feel that it, that it prescribes, um, prescribes up an avenue for people to operate outside of that, so.
Excuse me, I'm unsure about the piece about student evaluation outside of the core subjects. Who is going to develop that?
Student evaluation.
Like, we're evaluating how well the students are doing, are being taught.
Student growth. Uh, so, the growth component, so that's outside of the core subjects. All of that's determined at the local level, essentially between your administration and your teachers.
So, that's my question, if there's a deadline on this, are there things in place that?
We've already taken that step in terms, because obviously, we have student growth components now that we're looking at. And to use one example, and, um, one of our elementary teachers did essentially still life, excuse me, elementary art teacher, did still life, um, pictures with her students early in the year, and did a still life picture late in the year, and literally, you know, was assessing, you know, were they, you know, able to improve their artistic skills? I mean, define, other, I mean, each of those classes, even though they're non-core, you know, have certain expectations in units that they do. And so, they just use those locally, it could be a local exam, it could be physical education, it could be physical testing, it could be knowledge of certain sports.
Scott, based on the changes that happened in two thousand and eleven, is evaluation, um, process, uh, subject a cook to bargaining, or not?
No, it's not.
No. That's, that's actually a very specific provision on the two thousand and eleven legislation.
So, students with learning disabilities, for example, nowadays, take the standardized test, correct? So, how is that going to affect?
So, again, on special ed, um, uh, for special ed educators, uh, the assessment, uh, grow, or the growth component will not be based on the standardized state examination, even in, even in the core subjects.
They have alterations on the standardized test.
But they will be evaluated and helping some other.
For the most part, our special education students and those teachers that, that service them have been evaluating their student growth based on the IEP goals that are established for each child. So, so it is, it's not just even at the, at the district level, it's almost down to the child's level based on what goals were established as a part of the IEP.
So, there are a lot of student growth methods that aren't going to be standardized, they're going to be.
Correct, only about twenty percent of, uh, twenty percent of growth, or the total evaluation for two subjects is the only thing that's affected by any sort of state standardized assessment. Everything else is determined between the folks. Yeah, and, and the people here, so. I mean, that definitely puts a lot of, a lot of, uh, responsibility on, on you guys, but it also, I think, allows a good degree of flexibility, understanding that not all students are the same. And, uh, and districts need to be able to determine what it is that they feel is valuable for, for that growth, so.
And as of right now, we, we're putting a lot of that on our teachers to be able to determine what do they feel is appropriate growth measures, and then show us what those are and demonstrate growth. That's how it's been played right now.
So, you don't see that as a burden at this point, or it's something that would be difficult to meet?
I mean, I think we're already doing that.
Right.
There is, sometimes it appears to be vague in terms of, you know, everybody has, it's really a differentiated approach for the teaching staff. We have to keep working through that.
Do you use differentiated by teacher or by subject matter, by grade? Also, do teachers do it their own way?
Well, there, there is an element of, like, like Scott was pointing out, our teacher taking, um, because it goes back to his point about, well, how many kids, if you, if you see, like, if you're an art teacher in elementary and you see four hundred and fifty students, you have to somehow figure out that, you know, two hundred medium grew at this rate, or, you know, two. So, a lot of them take case studies, and they'll work through one class, and they'll show examples from the beginning, middle, and end, and, and demonstrate that growth, because that's how they can manage that. So, there, it does depend, and our teacher's gonna look different than, um, the high school math. The department would be a little more consistent in how they're demonstrating growth, 'cause they have different measures to look at.
Well, is your, just use, so just use art, like, example, so if you have three art teachers, they may all use a different methodology for determining student growth, and you're.
Well, they, they have discussions about how they're doing that, but, um, the, at this point, the state has not come forward and defined, this is how it has to play out.
Nor, nor we. Right, yeah. Nor we said, okay, you, you know, now, in their defense, many of them have said, okay, we all wanna decide what we're gonna do, kind of thing, particularly across the department level, but, you know, the, the idea, because they're doing similar units, but you can get in a spot where they may have unique units, make partnerships with, um, you know, other teachers in their building, where they may wanna exhibit or demonstrate the growth in a certain area, that may not be a, a unit or a specific, you know, assignment that's covered in another area.
I guess my, 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 my rationale for two is, one, if you have, um, a teacher that doesn't succeed, is a plan that teacher and administrator signed up for, and if the administrator didn't sign up for it, 'cause they got some issues with the teacher that aren't substantiated by work performance, they could potentially drive them out the door, uh, if we allow it to be opened on individuals.
But I think the.
Conversely, if you, well, if department-wide standard, you may not allow that very builder.
The plans are recorded to be in place, um, at the beginning of academic year. And also, the, the breakdown on these percentages, you know, we give you a good degree of local flexibility on these percentages, that also needs to be determined at the beginning of academic year. So, there is a, there's kind of a floor that you have to meet, but.
We, we still have a framework, I mean, it's, so, I mean, I, I, I mean, I get what you're saying, and that's where I get back to the first one. There's a whole, when you get into student growth, there is no, there is no real easy way to just say, this is what we're gonna do in all cases, and so, I, you know, I think, to Adam's point, they've tried to determine how that looks, particularly in these non-core areas, and it's very complex.
I just, I just don't, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of a one-on-one approach, because that's how, um, people get pushed on on an unfair basis. If administrator's not paying attention to what that sub-administrator's doing, you know, it happens quickly. And you have, in a previous process, litigation process, then it's not constructive, um, that's my, my. Right now, the evaluation process isn't tied to employment per se, um, uh, to the extent that it is, um, going forward, so I'm just a little sensitive to that. It's work, it's work to do.
Yeah, that's a valuable observation, but I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, I'm encouraged by, is that they're saying that they want us to control it locally.
No, I.
And local control is very important.
Yeah, I, I hear, I agree.
And I, I agree with them laying down a framework for us to work within, and a framework that is fairly standard across the state.
Yep.
But we get to put the meat on the bones, and it's Celine meat versus Dearborn meat versus Detroit meat.
Right.
And where I get a little annoyed is that with the changes in how the funding changed back in ninety-eight, you know, they have centralized the funding, so we no longer have the funds that we need to be able to do our local control. So, there are issues that we've got that, you know, we'd like to do it this way, but we can't afford to do it this way, so.
So, from the state's perspective, you know, the, the main area that we felt we were gonna be most prescriptive on was on the tools. um, and with training associated. And so that's where, where we put our dollars, your dollars. And, um, we felt that that was, uh, very unfair to require local districts to meet mandated criteria of that detailed nature without having some, having some funding associated. And we didn't want districts to have to compromise and not provide adequate training. Really, we felt that that was the, the key measure of growth, because it's important that students grow. That's the purpose of, of education is to, to have, uh, our main purpose of education is to, to have students improve. And, uh, but in terms of having effect on that, that real score, we felt that the practice, uh, really was, and the teaching methodology, and the, the methodology for administrators running the school, that's the key, the key element. And in my conversations with, uh, Dr. Ball, that seemed to be echoed in her sentiments as well. So that's why, that's why this particular component is funded and is very prescriptive, so. Uh, on the administrator evaluations, this, again, uh, is called a practice component, um, but the tools are called evaluation tools in this case, because, uh, they're not observation tools. They, uh, administrators are evaluated a little differently. There are administrator tools out there that, again, have been tested. State is offering three. And then we offer criteria for a local development option as well, very similar. The, uh, breakdown on the administrative component is, is the same as the practice component for the teachers. The, uh, superintendents are called out a bit differently, um, simply because they are evaluated by school boards. And, um, they're, the, the idea, I don't know how Celine handles administrator evaluation, but we put a requirement, requirement in that at least every two years, the superintendent is evaluating the score, so. The, uh, the breakdown, again, is very similar, eighty percent, uh, based on this evaluation tool. To, uh, I like it, Scott, read.
No, no, I heard, I heard two years.
Yeah, yeah.
Two years.
Four, four. Do whatever you want. Um, they're really silent there for a second, so.
We do a verbal review.
I figured that was probably the case. So we, what we wanted to make sure is that, uh, is that, you know, in some areas, again, you can't mitigate, just like you can't mitigate, uh, you can't legislate fraud, um, you, uh, you can't let it legislate for every, every killer who eats cider. But we wanted to try to send a message that this is important, and, and so we're going to put in some, uh, requirement. Uh, the other twenty percent of the practice component for administrators is based on quality of evaluations, key, key component there. Uh, financial management, uh, other things that are determined by the local board, and there's a, a number of suggestions that are included in the legislation.
Okay.
So, but of course, the, the quality of evaluations is the key, that we felt from a evaluation standpoint, um, you know, that the administrator needed to, needed to do, so.
Do, do we have any other, uh, questions for Representative Zuckey on the evaluation bills?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we use any of the three state mandated tools, kind of like we do the Danielson for the teachers?
Not currently. Actually, we use a modified version that was based off the, um, Leadership and Learning Center, Doug Reeves' model. So we would need to adjust, um, moving forward.
So we did depict one, did they?
Yeah, and in my sense, we would, we would end up likely, like, picking with probably wanting to, a little modification to it, we'd have to determine.
The Reeves is on the list of administrator tools, so.
It's been, we've modeled it, so.
Any other questions on the evaluation bills?
Okay. Okay.
Great work.
Thank you, very much. This has been, um, you know, there's a lot, a lot of, uh, education-based legislation in Lansing that is very, um, very, um, not bipartisan. We'll just put it that way. Um, and I think as a result of it, we see worse legislation. I went to the table early on, um, and had a conversation with Representative O'Brien, and she was very supportive of having this be a bipartisan effort. And we broke one bill into two bills so that we could make it bipartisan. And I think as a result of that, and as a result of really the work by the stakeholders, they've been instrumental, um, we ended up with, was what we ended up, and we took our time. The original idea, we wanted to have it introduced by the end of October.
We blew through that.
Five minutes. And we've, you know, subsequently been working to the point of, actually, we've got to get it done, because we're running up against a deadline. And so that's, that's where we've been at. But I'm very satisfied with the work that we've done. So the next, uh, next item, of course, is the fiscal year twenty fifteen budget, school aid fund in particular. So we are in the midst of dealing with budget right now. Um, the subcommittees are meeting, we've had, um, two, we just had a second, uh, subcommittee meeting, joint subcommittee on school aid, uh, in Department of Education, because technically those are two different funds, but, uh, there's a lot of cross-combinations. And, um, so to touch on the school aid budget, uh, so far, uh, the executive recommendation will be the best, best, I think, uh, numbers I can give you. For K-12, uh, two hundred and seventy million pre-funding for MIFsers, um, by the state, which is similar to the pre-funding method that was, uh, handled last, last year in fiscal year twenty fourteen. Whereas essentially, you don't have the state sending you money just to send back the state's land instead, um, and. Yeah, I, that seems to be very, very popular among, uh, any, um, candidate that I've talked with. And, um, uh, so there's two hundred and seventy million dollars of pre-funding, um, that's been proposed for MIFsers. The evaluation allowance, which of course is probably your, your biggest question, um, has been proposed to increase over fiscal year twenty fourteen from between eighty-three and a hundred and eleven dollars. There's been a lot of discussion about equity as a result of the school's aid, uh, and, and not accomplishing the equity solution that folks have, have desired in the nineties, um, and still seem to desire. So there's been, uh, basically what the governor proposed is to try and give schools with receiving only base of financial allowance a higher increase, um, over fiscal year twenty fourteen than schools who, uh, low, or receive a higher base amount, based on the two X amount. So you guys get a higher increase than in our, um, for people.
Three thousand bucks per year?
Uh, not that much. Uh, the, uh, so you.
Still waiting.
I know, I know you are. And I can tell you that, uh, there's a lot of discussion, although not a movement yet, and probably not a movement until after the election, or after the election. And probably into January of twenty fifteen, on really looking at how we're, as well as the school's aid. That's, that's, if you, you want to talk about the teaching contract, that's more than that. Talking about reducing for school's aid, major structural revisions is huge.
The money's not, it is, it is a producing, it's just implementation. It was part of initial, it was incorporated in the body that was put by the Senate and approved by the governor. It's in the legislation. It has to be funded. It's not a question of reopening Prop A, it's a matter of complying with Prop A at the legislative level, uh, budget level. If we just follow the law as it currently exists and fund it according to the law, the catch-up money would never be taken away from us. So it's not a question of reopening, it's a question of complying with the law already is.
Understood. Um, basically what this amounts to for, for Celine is, uh, seventy-three, uh, hundred dollar appropriation per pupil. That's a hundred and eight dollar, uh, increase over fiscal year twenty fourteen, so. On community colleges and, and higher education, so universities, um, these have also come out in part out of the school aid fund, uh, under, under the current breakdown. Three percent operation increase for CCs, so Washington would get that, plus a twenty-seven point seven million dollar MIFsers pre-funding. That's not per school, that's total for the community college network statewide, so that's actually a very small, small amount of money when you look at, I think there's twenty, uh, community colleges statewide, twenty or twenty-two. And, uh, then the universities, uh, would be a six point one interest, six one point one percent increase, which is just over eighty million dollars, for, uh, over fiscal year fourteen budgets.
What's the rationale of giving six point one percent to universities that have a tuition mechanism and giving, you know, under three percent to K-12 who doesn't have a tuition mechanism?
That is a good question. I don't have an answer for you. That, that, uh, but I'll ask the budget director, and, uh.
They have a bigger lobby than us.
Well, that could very well be, that could very well be. I didn't expect you to have any answer, Adam. Yeah, no, no, that's, that's a good question, though.
On the, uh, on the MIFsers, um, you know, we went through the, the, the market crash of, uh, oh eight, oh nine. Now the stock market's back up at record highs. Are we closing the gap at all?
Uh, very slowly, but, um, mostly due to additional state appropriations. Uh, the MIFsers gap is very large.
Okay.
I don't know the exact number. I want to say it's around thirty-five billion.
Okay.
I, I think that's approximately correct, give or take five to five billion.
I think. Well, I think if we go back a year and a half, it was at forty-eight billion.
Yeah, so. So.
Is that like a twenty-year recovery plan?
Uh, it's something like that. We, I mean, we're chipping away at, at the unfunded, uh, liability that, that is in the fund, unfortunately, by invest, you know, making these, uh, these chunks of state appropriation that put into it. Last year, in fiscal year twenty fourteen, there's something like five hundred million at least extra that we did in a supplemental. You know, so the state is putting money back in, but it's, it's, we got a while before, before it becomes, um, sustainable.
Okay.
So that's a huge problem. I think that's a, a big, big problem for the state, probably more so than any, any other issue, so. The, uh, performance criteria, uh, of which a lot of the funds are doled out, um, is, uh, very similar, uh, for, uh, as fiscal year fourteen, I think it's identical in fact, uh, for community colleges and universities. So there were some proposed changes, those didn't get approved in fiscal year twenty fourteen, and I think those proposed changes have been dropped. Actually, Washington Community College, just as a, as a, uh, note, gets the, either the highest or the second highest appropriation in state, um, in far, in terms of community colleges. So, um, they do, they do a very good job, and, um, and so, um, that's, that's where we're at, on community colleges. I sit on the subcommittee, so some may accuse us of playing little favorites, um, but that's not the case.
That's okay.
While we try to be, try to be applicable, um, but they do, they, they do a very job at meeting the criteria that's, that's laid out, so.
For the K-12 performance based funding, when do you anticipate that to be known?
I think June first.
June first.
Yeah, the start, the, I, I would not anticipate, I would not be comfortable saying that you're going to know anything for sure until the budget, uh, really is put together.
Well, I mean, as far as individual district, how much do qualify for?
Um, that I think will come at the same time. I mean, I have a, a listing of, of base amounts for each district, but that is about it as of right now, quite frankly. Um, and I think all the rest of it is going to shift around as, as the school aid fund is, is kind of doled out, so.
So do you think those numbers will hold, or do you think there's a, uh, a probability, a better probability of some upside or downside?
Well, it's an election year, so I think the probability is on the upside for K-12. You know, I think, uh, I think, at least from the folks that I've talked with, um, people are seeing the effects on K, on K-12 more than they see them at universities in terms of the, uh, the tightening of belts. And so as a result of that, um, election year politics tend to dictate historically, regardless of tightening of belts, more money put into K-12 and transportation, um, of which we talked about as well, so.
Would there then be a chance of a rounder cut after elections?
I don't think so. Uh, I don't think that's the case. I think, uh, I think that, uh, I mean, so, uh, when the, uh, well, I don't want to get too much into weeds on partisan politics, you know, it's not my aim tonight. But when the, uh, structure of tax changes that took place under the initiation of the corporate income tax, and the elimination of, uh, uh, corporate taxes on, hurt on sole proprietorships and, um, LLCs, that was when you saw a shift around of investment across various entities, uh, in the state. And as a result of that, um, that's when you saw this tightening of, of, as well. And then, uh, uh, so there was a rather large decrease in appropriation at that point, and it's been increasing, elevated slightly, this being the, the highest increase, uh, for the last several years. And so I don't think you're going to see, I think the, the, the pain, if you will, was dealt early. And then the, uh, I think you're, I, I don't think you're going to see more decreases, quite frankly. That's my, my personal opinion. Uh, any other questions on the budget? Um, so we actually have, actually a few, another slide here. So, uh, these are special projects. So, uh, one of the things that has been, uh, at least historically since I've been in the legislature, which is only, this is the second budget, we've had funding for things that, that, uh, the state wants to pursue, individual projects. So one unfortunate year-round school pilot. Um, I say year-round, uh, really the best way to think of it is a balanced calendar. In fact, tomorrow morning, during the corporations committee, um, I will be offering the substitute for the two million dollar corporation board balancing program. And it's our goal to have, um, this is for a supplemental, um, and then our, our goal to have another two million out of the fiscal year fifteen, uh, budget. So formally, at least, whole, uh, or balanced calendar pilot programs. And our goal is to have, uh, at least half a dozen schools that participate in these pilot programs to study the effects of going from a year-round calendar to a year-round regular calendar. The biggest obstacle to this right now is the liberty start date, um, but there have been schools that, uh, that have already gone into a balanced calendar and couldn't, and they can do this without violating the law. And, uh, so our goal is to pass that. I'm very concerned about the summer learning loss, and, uh, and so our goal is to, to try to understand how we can mitigate, mitigate that really with this balanced calendar. The pilot program does not increase the number of days per year, uh, issues that are, and so.
Is that for a district or just a school within a district?
Probably the, um, individual schools. Um, and part of the reason that we're targeting individual schools for the pilot program is because, one, it's a small amount of money, um, and, uh, two, we want to try to target schools based on socioeconomic nature and rural versus urban environments, to understand where best gains are, um, and where costs more money, uh, in particular, to do this type of thing. So we're, we're utilizing this as a way to, to gain some understanding as to what would happen if we do it on a statewide basis.
Where does the tourism industry line up on that?
Uh, well, historically, they, they were the reason for the liberty start date. Our argument on the pilot program, they've actually been, uh, pretty silent on the pilot program so far. And I don't deal with any tourism policy committee at all, so I wouldn't have been the ones to hear, hear about this other than in the news media. But, um, that being said, um, we're not arguing for taking away dates, we're just shifting them around of, of potential, uh, days that people could be traveling in the state. So we're saying, yes, you'll have less time in the summer, but you'll also have more time in the winter. And being in Michigan is a, is a four-season state, um, you know, we feel that this is very fair, so. But we do historically have identified, especially in high poverty areas, as the summer learning loss being a huge problem. And if you're talking about, uh, being concerned about student growth, uh, across the state, um, we need to do whatever we can to, to look at ways we can mitigate that loss, so. So that's, that's what we're looking at. Um, so we will see where that, uh, where the pilot program goes. There's actually very, very little prescriptive nature for what qualifies, so, um, if you guys are interested in applying, I will figure out who, um, who would be a responsible person in the department after the funding goes out, which would be very, very quickly on, on this first two million, because it's fiscal year twenty fourteen, it's like a mill. So the funding will be able to be spent immediately. Um, so we can, we can talk about doing that if you're interested, so. can, we can talk about doing that if you're interested, so... So, there was some additional funding, uh, on these next two little points for, um, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, um, and CTE. That funding is retained in the, uh, in the fiscal year twenty-fifteen budget, uh, in various similar numbers, uh, for, as, as for the twenty-fourteen. Um, so there's two million for STEM project teams, well over two million, um, that we got appropriated for personal robotics and other programs, um, that deal with, um, project-based education on a K-12 level primarily. Um, there's also this additional million for the NFC incorporation into CTE programs. So, there have been a couple pieces of legislation put forward that are stalled on the Senate, uh, and I still have some concerns about them as well. Um, but they deal with, uh, rethinking teaching the Michigan American curriculum, uh, and applying it through curateca. Um, I can tell you that, uh, from a basic geometric standpoint, probably your high school geometry class can be taught without too much of a problem through various machining and welding courses without really any different differentiation in terms of the material, or the quality, or the robustness of the material. That's my, uh, my impression from my, my days in the engineering world, manufacturing. Um, and I think that's very important for folks who are interested in the trades. We have a huge, huge number of open jobs in the, and growth in the areas of, um, curatec and advanced manufacturing, various forms of welding, machine. Um, and I'm not talking about, um, you know, hand milling and, and laboring, I'm talking about, you know, running five-axis mills that are the size of this room. You know, that was the environment that I started working in when I became a young engineer. Uh, we have deficiencies, and these are jobs that start at sixty grand a year.
Yep.
And so, uh, it's very important that, uh, from my perspective and from a number of other folks in the legislature, that we allow for, um, incorporation and encourage districts to pursue that, um, of the American curriculum into these curatec areas and STEM education areas.
If you want to get some additional insight, we have some of the very best educators in the nation, um, in our district. One was here tonight, and I would encourage you to, uh, reach out and talk, uh, because they can offer a lot of insight.
We did. Well, we'll talk again. Um, and so, uh, so absolutely, you know, I, um, so anyway, this, this is only a million bucks, let's say, well, they're small, small, small dollars. Um, but the idea, coupled with, uh, some of this, these legislative bills is to, you know, open up the door for, look, we're not talking about decreasing robustness and stuff. There are some folks who have issues with the robust nature of the Michigan American curriculum. I'm not one of them, but I am very interested in applying that curriculum through different avenues, and I believe very strongly that that can be done. So, um, so, um...
I think it's going to be very difficult to bring our manufacturing back. I'm sure we don't have the people who can do what we need.
That's exactly right. So, if you want to talk about really a twenty-first century middle class, um, the data seems to support that this is where it's going to be created. So, um, the, uh, as we discussed previously, the total dollars for the, for the twenty-fifteen, twenty-year, our fiscal year twenty-fifteen budget, uh, for the assessment and the evaluations, as I said, it's a, it's a progressive rollout. So, forty-one million in this budget for it. Um, we'll see more dollars going forward as well. Um, there's, uh, early childhood education, which, uh, the state, the state's program is the GSRP, the Great Start起点 Program. Uh, there was sixty-five million dollars that the governor put in, um, last year. Um, the idea is to put another sixty-five million in this year, um, and that will essentially eliminate a waiting list. Um, this is perceived, you know, widely by partisan support, basically at poverty level of two hundred fifty percent greater, or two hundred fifty percent and less, uh, for getting, for getting kids into, uh, these early childhood programs. So, that early childhood, uh, the state, you know, is supported essentially. So, we're also looking at, uh, part of the Department of Education budget handles, uh, childhood, and they call it the Great Start Quality Program, or childcare rather, Great Start Quality, um, childcare regulations. And, um, part of that, uh, funding this time around, actually, uh, in conjunction with, with federal requirements, is to, uh, dole, uh, out federal funds to, uh, programs that have learning transition into these early childhood programs. So, you deal with decreasing, I guess, childcare and more like early learning is really the way to do it. Uh, and that's, uh, that's been, uh, that will happen as well, but it's handled under the budget. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at in terms of the school aid budget.
Okay, excellent.
The highlights of it. And, uh, so, right now, we've had a couple of subcommittee hearings so far. And we're going to be working on, um, you know, the, the, right now, we're actually working more on supplementals than anything else. Um, the supplementals are twenty-fourteen dollars, um, that are coming up as a result of, um, you know, what some people call a surplus. I believe that's not really a way to, to do it because it's all our tax dollars. And saying, defining it as a surplus kind of mitigates the fact that it is state-collected tax dollars, in my opinion, and people have put in that, that money. So, um, but part of the supplementals deal with, with that as well. And that's the money that we're dealing with primarily right now. Um, I think, especially going into next month, we're going to see some heavy work on appropriations of committees on the twenty-fifteen budget. So, and, um, and we'll go back and forth. The, the Senate is also creating their budget. Um, and those are done typically in middle May, um, and then we negotiate. So, and that's where everything changes. So, so anyways, but we try, we try to, we try to come out of that okay. Um, another question that was posed, um, tonight was the expansion of sinking fund dollars. Um, so, uh, to give you kind of a high, high view, um, I should talk about this with, with Dave, uh, Quaker Molink. Um, and, uh, at the beginning of last year, actually, I have a suggestion, I believe I superintegrated. Um, we introduced legislation to, uh, expand sinking fund, uh, use. Um, there are multiple bills out there. Um, the most notable, I've been introduced myself, represented Michael Creedy out of Oakland County and represented David Kinsick out of, uh, Westmoreland County. Um, in total, the bills are not hybrid together. We did not hybrid them together specifically for the reason that there had been strong opposition to this legislation, and we wanted to see whatever we could get through to go through. Um, we figure if we can get some expansion, it's better than no expansion. And so, um, so that's where the reason they're not hybrid. Uh, they cover technology, school security, and non-operational transportation costs. So, uh, our thought is that this is wholly within the spirit of what sinking funds are designed to do for the large projects, uh, large, long-standing projects, which are by, by orders of necessity. So, main obstacle, um, actually, I think pretty much universally, all local chamber of commercees, uh, are supportive of this. Um, and the only obstacle has historically been the Michigan chamber, who views this as an additional tax, arguing this, is that that's not the case because it falls within the spirit of what sinking fund dollars are supposed to be used for in terms of wide-scale improvement. Um, they have been much more silent this time, uh, than historically, as I understand it. Um, and, uh, and so, uh, our conversations with Michael Creedy is the, is the Republican on the team, and, uh, he's been working with his leadership, uh, to get a committee hearing and make sure that the, the chamber is just neutral, just be neutral, and we think we can get this through. It has overwhelming support by legislators.
Who's president of Michigan Chamber, Dan?
Sorry?
Who's president of Michigan Chamber?
I do not know that, that answer, actually. Um, but we can, we can look it up.
Because Van Nando ran it nationally for years.
Right.
It's controlled by GR.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain. Um, quite frankly, they have, I think they have about three lobbyists that we see on a pretty regular basis. Um, but they, we really have not dealt with them too much on, um, educational issues. They just seem to view this issue as a, as a tax related, not done.
Well, I, I appreciate you taking the lead on this, because you've been, you've been upfront on this, and, you know, just keep on keeping on it, and eventually it'll happen. Let me throw out a left-field idea here. Uh, would, would there be any support if, if you were to, with this legislation, say that we will have a, a moratorium, uh, increases in sinking funds for a three-year period? Because really what we're asking for is that the money that we raise out of the sinking fund, that we be able to use it in a little different way. And, and I think the concern, you know, the concern of those who oppose this is that, well, this is going to open the floodgates, and, you know, there's going to be all kinds of buy proposals, increasing sinking funds and all that, and, and maybe we can alleviate that a little bit if you had a, a moratorium period. And I'm not sure three years is appropriate. It should probably be less than that. Uh, but that may, maybe something you can throw out that, that would get some traction.
Uh, I will definitely look into that. I mean, that would, in my opinion, that would, uh, that would be something that the folks who are opposed to it would find attractive. So, um, we'll definitely look at that and see, see what we can get in terms of traction. Um, good thing is that the committee chair, uh, is likely go to, to education, which is where we really wanted to go, quite frankly, rather than tax policy. Um, and, uh, the committee chair seems to be okay with this issue. Uh, she doesn't, she doesn't have, uh, any sort of opposition to it from her sole self, from a single point. Yep, so that's possible. Um, like I said, I think if you get it through the committee, uh, I think it will, it would have no problem being voted out of the committee. Um, and, uh, and I don't see any problem getting it through the House. The Senate, we have to look at again, but, uh, but the House for sure.
I would think there's a great opportunity for, um, Washington County Republican Party to step up and, and help, um, Sanders from this area. Um, and I think you hear from the Republican base here in Washington County that that's a positive thing, allowing local electrics to control local funds for previously authorized, um, taxes in local community all agreed to. If, uh, Washington County Republicans stepped up on that, that'd be helpful, I think.
I, I think that's definitely the case, and I think really, especially if you were able to target, I don't think the governor has any opposition to this, quite frankly. Um, I think if you were really to target the Michigan chamber in particular, um, that is going to be your, your best, best way to do it. So, I, it's, from my understanding of Lea, Lan, and Lansing, they're really the only people, but they carry considerable political...
Yeah, I think if you came with the moratorium, and if your renewal fell in that period, you could go for the renewal on it.
Right.
But no increases on it. I think that, maybe that would be something that, uh, should get wide support.
Yeah, I would agree if you did.
Scott Holman's the president, and, or Scott Holman's chairman of the board, and Richard Studley's the president.
Where's he from? Do you have an idea?
That's it.
Where's he from?
Uh, just says Lansing.
Basically Lansing.
Scott Holman is in Covington, Kingly, Loomers LLC. And Richard Studley's president and CEO of the Michigan Chamber of Commerce.
That's the last one.
Yep. Um, I think realistically, you're not going to see passage on this. I think it's one of those things that we'll go through during the lame duck session. You know, um, they'll run as many as, as a meeting bill in a day during lame duck. This is one of those things where I think we'll push it through, it'll sit, and it'll just go, like that. And, uh, that's, as long as there's not any huge opposition, and I, quite frankly, I think there's going to be way bigger fish to fry during the lame duck than this. I think this is one of those ones we can just go through.
You can deliver on that, that would be outstanding.
Yep, we're working on it, so, definitely. Um, snow day life session. So, this is fun.
So, my first question on this is, why does the state have any input at all on snow day? First question.
There's a hundred eighty day, a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty-two.
Yeah, a hundred eighty day is horrible where you were at in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten.
So, we got that. It's a rule that says you got to ask kids and families so many days.
Right.
After that, why is there any input at all?
Well, I just, I would agree on that in that case then. Um, I believe that that requires a new standard. Now, there are some districts, because, especially this year, um, because of, um, uh, because of the larger amount of days off due to snow, um, are not needing that requirement with, with their current end date of the calendar, of what they have to do. And they, uh, historically, this has been given in certain cases, to certain districts, um, as for the, essentially, where they forgive those extra days, um, and allow them to make it up either minutes or just forgive them, period. Um, this happens historically. So, I've only been on the legislature, you know, one year. Um, I saw this come up about the same time last year, in twenty thirteen, and I was the only person to vote against it. I said, this is, quite frankly, ridiculous. It was targeted at two districts. It was Northern Michigan. Um, and I said, my argument, and this was, I was very blunt to the, to the individuals advocating for it, and I said, you know, you're telling me that it just started to snow in Northern Michigan, and, and you couldn't plan for this? And, uh, and they said, you just don't understand. And I said, well, I, that's very clear. Um, but if you look at, again, educational research, the value of a day of school from an educating standpoint is much greater than breaking out that day into a series of minutes. What we saw in the twenty thirteen legislation was, uh, that those districts really abused the, the power that we gave them. And they took the extra days, and they added just a few minutes on to a whole lot of days for the rest of the year. We passed the legislation very early in the year, and they essentially spread out those few extra days in, you know, five or ten-minute periods over, over weeks. And so, teachers' lesson plans typically don't take into account three minutes, add it on to a classroom period for five minutes, so students just sit. Um, there's no value in that from an educational standpoint. And, uh, that was my argument in voting against it. I still believe that today. Um, the, there's been another bill that's been introduced again to allow forgiveness of days. Um, and there's been a thirty-minute per day requirement, uh, added, again, in a high school scenario. Thirty minutes spread out over six periods is like five minutes per period. So, I don't see a lot of educational value in that. Um, so, we're working on what this is. There have been a lot of press on this issue. Um, and we've heard from districts, superintendents who are in favor of forgiving the, the day requirement and allowing it to be made up in, in hours, um, and, or minutes, a time period, basically is what it's defined as. And there are districts who are vehemently opposed to it and say, no, you should hold us to, hold our feet to the fire. You need to meet the day requirement. From a philosophical standpoint, I, Dave and I have talked enough times, I think you know, that I only have very strong philosophical opinions. I'm, I'm not an idealist, I'm very flexible. Um, but, uh, this is an area that I feel pretty strongly about. Uh, and it's because of these historical abuses that we've seen by folks who are simply looking to meet a cost requirement, and they're not looking at, at what the value of their education is. Um, and so, uh, um, so basically, that's, that's kind of where we're at. The state superintendent is, uh, has been boldly opposed to this. The state school board, um, both the Democrats and Republicans have come out with, uh, unanimous opposition to the bill.
We recently had a notification from our state superintendent association that they have, they would be advocating against, which is... Because the state board is advocating full day.
Full day. You want to meet the day requirement.
Which is staying with superintendents.
So, I don't know what your thoughts are on this. Um, I would love to hear them. But, uh, but my opinion is, is that historically, we've seen too many abuses of this, and five minutes on to a class period poses zero educational value.
Right now, we're two days off it. I mean, we may want to look at a hybrid. There may, there may be a day on the calendar that, that is a scheduled off day, that we may want to say, okay, we want to take that day for school. Now, that may be a day that was set aside for professional development or something like that, and we'll, we'll have to work with, uh, you know, with, with the vested parties on that to get their buy-in on it. But, but take one of those days, and then maybe add some minutes on and kind of do a hybrid, so we don't have to extend the school year.
There, I did some, see that's a conversation that day. Yeah, um, in terms of ours' calendar for remainder of the year, we have professional development day after exams, so it's basically teacher grading day, uh, that day. And the other day is Good Friday. Um, it's not connected to spring break, so, uh, that can be interesting conversation for folks to have.
I don't think we want to go there. Wait, then the calendar says, that's what the calendar says.
The calendar says, the calendar says.
It's very true to stay ahead of this particular case. So I don't, I don't, from a state's perspective, I don't know what the likelihood of the bill that it is has. Last year, I was very shocked at the fact that I was the only no vote in, in the entire House floor. This seemed like an outrage, that this, of the decrease in educational value and really the unchecked, unchecked abilities that it gave to these, these two districts. And so, but we've seen significantly greater opposition this time. And it's probably largely due to the fact that it affects so many districts statewide every year. So as far as I know, it's just...
This new bill does not undo the previous bill.
No, that was specifically designed for two districts for one year. And so my vote was more of a philosophical, you know, hand in the air and say, so what really, I mean, why is it that you can't, that you can't, you know, take this into account when you get normal snowfall? And this year we have significantly greater than what, what we've had historically. And so the conversation is much broader this year.
Okay, so that was a law for one year?
That was one year. It was a car. That's what I think of that. It was a favor done for those two districts.
Any final questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Maybe I missed this when I stepped out, but when was the last time we've had it? A couple days?
It's been at least fifteen years.
It's been a long time since we've had real snow.
And ultimately, prior to, twenty years ago, there was not a makeup requirement depending on different times, the different legislation back and forth on that for a period of time.
I think in two thousand, Sam had it ahead of the day.
In ninety-five, we had Wednesday, which was the last year.
I have a question. Where do you think we were having these days off? We mentioned that Friday, fourteen.
It gets really tight, you know, and this is, this is in the legislative issue.
What would be after May?
Rafael, you can't even, there's no theory we're seeing. We're not moving to graduation and so that, that requirement, one of the issues we've proposed is the fact that we've lost significant days within the second trimester. And so I want to be clear, we have, but our, our second trimester was longer than the, so right now, we're at fifty-eight days in the first trimester with the minus eight in the second, we're at fifty-six days. We were at fifty-three days in the third trimester. You add, if we were to add two in the third semester, we'd be at fifty-five. So in fact, adding them, because there's this push right now to say, hey, we need to adjust that exam schedule back because we're moving time in the second try. If you look at it in totality, we had extra days, additional time built into the second try. Now, to say, you know, instruction was altered and everything, there's still an impact to the instructional environment. But to say that the day, the, the trimesters are now inequity, there's inequity. In fact, this snow day scenario has, has created equity in terms of balance across the entire calendar.
So essentially, your plan for some snow days?
Well, yeah, we, we had some issue, we really had scheduling issues with trimester, with trimester exams and MME, and there's always this crunch period in March anyway. And we actually had a lot of conversation about that. Stay with what we had and now it has come, it's been fortuitous in terms of the day issue.
Then rich grading, planning for snow days. I'm having a tough time with this.
The one thing, the one thing we can do is look to not end, not ever have the last day here on Friday because ultimately adding, we had ended on a Tuesday and you had added Wednesday, Thursday is very different now than talking about with families, but coming back on a Monday, Tuesday. That, that is the one issue that becomes problematic for families and staff who plan vacations and other activities.
So what is, what's the penalty if we just kind of...
The reduction in state aid.
Yep.
Correct. It's, it's...
Always, always. The care money is always...
On a very, on a very serious basis, if we choose not to school on the Friday, that means we add it at the end of the school year. And I'm not sure adding a day at the end of the school year is any more advantageous to learning than a minute a day for next week.
It's, it is a difficult situation. The issue we have right now with adding, if we were to look to add Good Friday, and I'm not suggesting in any way...
We do not record that as a recommendation to anybody. Opening your door.
If we were to add Good Friday, we still have another day. If we only had one day, because we have two days now, we almost, you're almost better off saying we're going to go Monday, Tuesday than just saying we're going to come, try and come back on a Monday and get seventy-five percent attendance and some other things. So I'm picking it. And, and I was just going to say, the other issue we're running into now is that it's, it's life, we could have another day.
How about, how about a couple of Saturdays?
Their districts have done that before.
That way you're smack in the middle of it.
The other issue, the other scenario is that offering school is one thing, doesn't meet the requirement. You have to have seventy-five percent of your students attend in order to count the day. So it's not as though we can simply offer school on Saturday, whoever shows up counts and we move forward.
You'll figure that out. Any other questions for Representative Zemke?
And I want to, I just threw up this, this slide up here as well on these additional issues. So I wanted to remind you guys that those, these are real issues and some of them will not be tackled prior to lame duck. I'm willing that, that some of them will not be, probably eighty percent of them aren't going to be taxed for the lame duck. So...
Third grade reading, what do you think, what do you think is an added value?
I think there, I think there is enough support for it. I don't think the existing legislation has support. But, but I know that the sponsors are going back to the table and trying to pull together and helping people.
You're talking about anyone in the stable that's different, the correlation between third grade reading and high school success.
Right.
The line is very clear, but a legislative attempt to address that through retention, I don't know that there's any research that indicates that's a real effective...
I don't think there is. I think there's only, there's only one state that's doing this.
It's Ohio.
Florida. I believe there's only one state at least.
Ohio's reviewing it.
Right. So I think Florida's the only one who's had it into it in any effect. I think it's been a short period of time, quite frankly. So I don't think there is any evidence to support, to support that. That being said, I hate to, you know, to the legislature totally under the bus, but there's a lot of things that are done without any evidence to support. That's a very, very loose word in Lansing. And so these are issues that I believe that you should have on your radar. As to, you know, when you hear stuff on the radio or you read stuff in the paper, give me a call, I'll give you each a card. And let us know what you think. Ask us questions. You know, there's, like I said, you know, regarding the evaluation legislation, I've done radio interviews and heard one sentence of my entire interview end up on the radio. And I'm like, oh my God, this is terrible. This is nothing like what we intended. And, and so if you're hearing something that poses any sort of concern at all, ask and we'll tell you what the real story is. It might be what you heard, but it also might be something completely different. So, and, you know, as Dave said, I work heavily on education issues. This is probably the largest area that I spend time in. So, you know, let me know whatever you guys are thinking anytime. And I'll be more than happy to come back at any other time to talk about any issues.
Sure. You know, we appreciate you coming here tonight. You know, I've been on the board now for a little over two years and I don't think we've had this level of in-depth discussion on, on what's happening in Lansing. It's greatly appreciated and you're, you know, you're truly a representative and we appreciate that. And you're always welcome. We will ask you back and guarantee you that.
I hope so.
And that, and, you know, if there's anything we can do to, to help you on your end, just let us know.
I appreciate it very much and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you guys. It's not too often we get to talk for this, you know, really lengthy time in a mobile detail.
Yeah.
Oh, you go. Talk a little bit about the, the EAA and the State Road School District.
Okay, so the EAA is currently in existence. It was created, it was actually originally created out of, out of a deviation of the school reform office. The School Office of Reform was created by the legislature in two thousand and eight-ish. I think it was right before former Governor Anken left office. And the Office of School Reform was designed to take in the lowest five percent of performing schools academically, financially, and change them essentially. And the EAA specifically was created after we changed Governor, Governor Snyder as a, I wouldn't say it's a subset of the Office of School Reform, but there's definitely, that's where the intent came from. That's, that's been pretty clear. And so the, I don't know how this happened and I wasn't a part of the legislature during that period, but essentially the thought of whoever created the EAA was to take the school reform principles and have more of a state control over them. The School, Office of School Reform works heavily with the local school boards and the local ISDs to improve districts. The EAA is an independent agent of the state. So it's state, it's a statewide district. Even though it's only operated in Detroit, the idea behind it is a state school, state-run school, certainly, definitely. That is, that is what it is.
So it could operate anywhere in the state and theoretically, they could say, all right, such and such a school, you're having trouble, we're going to take you over, we're going to make changes and we're going to make it better.
Correct.
That would be the theory.
So that's what the theory is. So under the current law, the EAA, the way it was created is very similar to the way a charter school is chartered. You have a chartering entity and a local unit of government that get together and agree to set up this contract. And so the EAA was chartered essentially by Eastern Michigan and in partnership with, I believe it was Robert Bob, who was the emergency financial manager of Detroit Public Schools at the time. Either it was, you know, we had two EFMs or DPS and they all have two first names. So I can't remember if it was him or if it was Yen. And so I believe it was him though. And so there was this agreement, this interlocal agreement that was put together and that created the EAA. It was created for fifteen schools specifically, although the language is there that it is a statewide district. The key differences are that under, at least I believe, under the interlocal agreement, it requires certain things. It requires Eastern Michigan's continued participation, of which from my understanding, they really do not want. They're, they're chartering entities, not, not a participant in the EAA is what their, their take seems to be. The, and it requires, it also has some significant restrictions on obtaining Title I funds, which particular for a lot of these districts who are low performing, Title I funds are highly applicable and very coveted. And so you have federal, federal dollar issues with, with obtaining those. So as a result of the, the lack of those Title I funds that would have gone to the EAA, not going to the EAA, the state loaned them extra money. And they have also, because they're a chartering entity or charter district, they have been able to leverage private funds in ways that traditional public districts cannot. And so that's, that's where the EAA is right now. The House Bill forty-three sixty-nine is designed to do primarily two or three things. One is to remove Eastern Michigan from the agreement and, and create, create the EAA as a true, you know, school district under legal definition.
So general public school district?
I believe so, yeah. But on a statewide, statewide basis. It would also, with that, be able to cover essentially any school and there would not be a jurisdictional restriction. Now, the legislation has historically had a cap on how many schools could be in that district. And when it passed the House in January of, or February twenty thirteen, it was fifty. Senate bill removed that cap completely to grow essentially the entire state at a worst case scenario. And I, like I said, I don't want to get into, you know, you know, political motivations behind this. I'm telling you the facts of what it is.
But it's on a school by school basis. It's not a district.
It is a district.
I mean, it is a district itself.
But it takes one school.
At a time.
Two schools.
Right. The limitations have all been on schools. And so there's been some caveats to this cap though. Currently, actually just dissolved very recently, there was an exclusivity agreement of essentially single source for school reform by the Office of School Reform, a contract that was put in place that the EAA was the sole source of school reform. Opportunities, whatever you want to call it, they, they were provided by, that serviced the school reform, the only ones. And outside of, you know, so essentially this cap on the EAA that was in the House Bill but not in the Senate Bill would have prevented the school reform office from putting more schools in than that. The House Bill's been in, I think fluid is like, like not even a justifiable way to describe it. It is all over the place. Yes, very gaseous with like permeable walls. And so we're really not sure what is there. There is like significant opposition to it, you know.
I was going to say, didn't the, you know, remember IPSE Chamber just come out against it? I know they're just...
Right. So the opposition has been in kind of multiple categories of, of opposition. There have been people who are opposed to the expansion, which is what the Inter-IPSE Chamber came out against. And there have been people who are exposed to the concept as a, as a ideological standpoint. The, I voted against the forty-three sixty-nine legislation and I did for primarily two reasons. And I went to the EAA schools. I went on my own merits. I set up the visits myself. I did not go on any sort of tours. And I took a school board member from the State Department who had been historically very close to the EAA. And I said, you know what? I want to see what this is all about. I'd been in the legislature for about six weeks at the time. And so I want to see if this is what I hear it is in terms of a negative standpoint. I want to hear, see what, if it is what I hear it is in a positive standpoint. And, and what I saw had definitely, I said, I think had, I wouldn't say I had like concerns from an ideological standpoint. There, it's a very different district in terms of its district-wide policies than any other district I've seen. Some of these things I think are positive in terms of the number of days per year that students attend. There've been, there's over two hundred per year, which more time in test education historically is a very positive thing. The idea behind teaching each student individually, I would liken it more towards like a flip classroom type of approach where you spend more time working with students individually. Opponents to the way the EAA does it, say it's a computerized approach, I didn't see that. And I have friends who are in the EAA as teachers and we've had a lot of conversations and they don't see it like that either. Now, that's not to say that some people don't do that. I would say the best way to describe this is that there's not a lot of like concrete nature, period. Or there seems to be a lot of areas of gray. I voted against it for really two reasons. One, because I talked to the chancellor of the EAA, John Covington, and he told me that he had financial issues. And I said, if you have financial issues with fifteen schools and we just gave you ten million dollars as a loan, then you have no business running fifty schools right now. And I'm not going to create a district that could have fifty in it that is not financially viable. That's the reason these schools, part of the reason these schools are in the situation they're in right now. And two, because the idea behind the EAA was described to be a pilot program. And a pilot program should prove itself and work out kinks. That's the reason we're doing the balanced calendar as a pilot program before any degree of expansion. And so that's the reason I voted against forty-three sixty-nine when it first passed the House. Those reasons have not alleviated. Those reasons have not alleviated a year later at all. I talked to the bill sponsor about a week ago, and I told her exactly why I'm opposed to the legislation. And she, her response was, so it's basically just too soon. And I said, that's the biggest thing I'm hung up on right now. I said, there's no data at all. There's no growth data. There's nothing. And I met with the EAA folks several times. They came, and we gave them the lowdown on the evaluation legislation. And we told them how it would affect them, and it affects them just like any other district, a publicly funded district. So as I said before, I don't have a lot of ideological things. There are certain things that the EAA is doing. This greater number of days, the longer days, the idea behind utilizing levels to take out the stigma associated with being held back a grade, that's a very positive thing. It makes it more fluid in terms of the educational experience. I like a student, more student-centered approach to learning because all kids are not the same. And I'm a big supporter of flip classrooms as well, where you have instructional methods taken outside of the classroom. These are all obviously depend, highly dependent on infrastructure or technology development in a district as well. But I like the idea of educators being able to work more hands-on with kids. And the EAA, in my opinion, from what I saw, does this. Now, that may not always be the case universally.
So have there been any metrics? I mean, you said there's no data, but obviously, some kids graduated, some kids passed tests, didn't pass tests.
So there's four assessments that the EAA designed itself to, or they didn't design themselves, that's an inappropriate way of saying it. They decided to utilize four assessments throughout the course of an academic year to measure growth. The, we've been basically a year into it now. I've not seen the full results of those assessments. The first bill passed the House after the second assessment had just been taken, and they had just gotten the results back. And they claimed growth. I said, well, look, you said you wanted four assessments. The state doesn't require you to do four assessments to measure growth over an academic year. I want to see the other two assessments. It's not enough just to say we're going to do four to measure our own growth and tell me to expand it after you've only taken two. That's ridiculous. And so, so I've not seen the final results of a full academic year of growth at this point. There's also been, as is typical, I think, from an ideological standpoint, some concerns about the, also many of the assessments. I don't know if that's actually the case or not. There was an area of concern that seems to be pretty well replicated even amongst the teachers that I'm friends with, that are teachers there, that, about IEP uses and special education. And so that seems to be something that is a cause of concern. But, you know, I mean, that's kind of where we're at on the EAA in general.
Okay.
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of opposition and a lot of.
Appreciate that.
This, like, is a lot of the weeds here. I apologize for the.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. Be patient with us for four minutes. We're going to wrap the meeting up here. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through E as part of the consent agenda. Trustee Fries and trustee Zimmer, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items scheduled on the next agenda.
There'll be reports from policy and from budget. In addition, there will be a presentation related to the professional development survey that was conducted. And more from Steve and the group about where that's at. Also, I did hand out this Friday, February twenty-eighth, this is scheduled lab day. And there'll be engineers from Toyota at Slay Middle School. You can see there the opportunity to visit Slay Middle School on February twenty-eighth throughout the day to see where they're at in terms of working with students in terms of some experience, encouraging students to consider engineering as a potential field.
Excellent. Okay, next, next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March eleventh, right here at six-thirty. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Justice Carter, all those in favor?
I really apologize for not, for not speaking the first time around. And I really, I beg that you listen, we discussed for three minutes. In that, I hear a lot today that I'd like.
The chair will suspend the rules and allow the speaker for three minutes.
Thank you. I heard a lot about accountability and about, about measuring people against a standard. And I have a question for the board. And in that, on February fourth, my son, a seventh grader at the middle school, was threatened to have his throat slit. And it came with strong influence that we asked that he be searched, his locker be searched. And that did happen. And a weapon was found, a gun to be specific. Narcotics were found. Tobacco was found. The child had a switchblade previously brought to school. And we were assured that we would be a part of the decision-making process on what happens to this child and how this child is going to be held accountable, just like you guys are going to be held accountable. That didn't happen. My son learned via a text message that the child will come back to school. And Mr. Grayden made that decision that he could come back. I'm just curious how the heck that kind of a decision is made. And if we aren't holding these kids accountable, they'll never be held accountable.
You now have three terrified children to allow one child to come back. You're disrupting the lives of those three children because they want to go to a different school because of the one child that you allowed to come back. How did you make that decision to allow this one child to come back? Is the board aware of what's going on?
So as I read through the prohibited acts, there were many, many, there were many, many violations of endangerment of others, criminal acts, possession of tobacco, threats, weapons or look-alike weapons, and all of the suspensions and possibilities for expulsion. I'm just floored. And my son, twelve years old, cried last night and said, how could they make that decision? So we're here as his warriors to say, how did you make that decision? And how will you protect him?
I'll speak to you afterwards and I'll send it along with Mr. Rafferty.
Yeah, as, as our policy, we don't respond to questions. We appreciate your input. Certainly, the administration will, will get back to you and try to alleviate your concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. All of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?